Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask if you have any cell phones, beeps, pagers, electronic devices, if you would either shut them off or put them on silent and vibrate, please. Also like to let you know that this meeting is being taped by Dartmouth YouTube Television, DHST Media, and it is available for rebroadcast on DCTV Channel 9's on the following days, Wednesday and Thursday at 5:00 PM, Friday at 6:00, Saturday at 8:00, and Sunday at 2:00 PM. It's also broadcast on Channel 18 on Monday and Saturday at 12:00 noon and Thursday at 3:00 PM. And there's usually some other times that they also put it in there. We appreciate all the TV time that they give us. Roll call please, Ms. Gentham.
John Noons.
Yep.
Mary Waite.
Here.
Kathleen Amorall.
Here.
Shannon Jenkins.
Chris Oliver.
Here, thank you. Dr. Jenkins is a little under the weather tonight, we hope she's feeling better, so doing that. Okay, first order of business, recognition. Mr. Tebow, the principal of Dartmouth High School, has a couple of presentations that he's going to talk about.
Thank you, Mr. Noons. Each year Dartmouth High School is tasked with selecting two students to receive the Superintendent's Excellence Award. And in order to make this difficult decision, we ask for input from the two student support teams, who nominate students for consideration based on academic excellence, as well as contributions and leadership made to Dartmouth High School. The first recipient of this year's Superintendent's Excellence Award is a young man who is well-known throughout the Dartmouth High School community as a polite, respectful, quiet, young man who leads by the power of his example. Joshua Moniz is an exceptional student leader, and has been for four years at Dartmouth High School. Joshua has excelled in many of the most rigorous courses offered at Dartmouth High School, including such courses as AP English Language and Composition, AP Calculus BC, Project Lead the Way slash AP Computer Science A, and AP Physics. And that's just his senior course log. Joshua has also successfully completed AP United States History and a dual-enrollment pre-calculus with trigonometry course at a local college. While Josh's academic excellence is undeniable, it is, as I alluded to, his leadership and service to the Dartmouth High School community that is truly commendable. Joshua has served on the Student Council for four years, and is currently the president of the Student Council. Additionally, Joshua has served as a student representative to the school committee, a member of the school council, a member of Key Club, he's been the student representative to the Southeast Regional Student Advisory Council, and is a member of the Southeast Regional Student Advisory Council's Diversity and Inclusion Subcommittee. Joshua also serves as associate editor to our school's award-winning student newspaper, The Spectrum. Where Josh finds the time, I'm not sure, but he's also a student musician and a student athlete as well. Josh is a member of the Unified Track Team, one of our student volunteers for the Special Olympics Day Games, which we just hosted again on Friday. He also serves as a percussion section leader in Dartmouth High School's National Championship Marching Band, and is a member of the Stage and Concert Band as well. For all of the reasons I've listed, Josh was also selected earlier this year as the Francis W. Galishaw Scholarship recipient, and Josh will definitely be missed by the Dartmouth High School community, but we wish him well as he continues his education in the fall at Stonehill College, where he plans to major in computer engineering. So while Joshua is exceptional, so too is our second recipient, which is Mr. Evan Garcia. Evan is both an outstanding student academically, as well as a quiet and effective student leader, who, similar to Josh, leads by the power of his example. Evan has taken and successfully completed many of the most rigorous courses offered at Dartmouth High School, including AP Statistics, AP Environmental Science, AP Human Geography, AP Psychology, and again, those four AP courses are what he's taking currently this year alone in his senior year. He's also successfully completed AP World History, AP United States Government and Politics, AP English Literature with AP Research, AP United States History, and AP English Language with AP Seminar. As a result of Evan's academic commitment and drive, Evan has been named an AP Scholar with Distinction, and is eligible to receive the AP Capstone Diploma. In keeping with a similar theme, Evan's academic achievement is certainly noteworthy, but the leadership and service contributions that Evan makes and have made, has made over the past four years are truly what distinguishes him from his peers, and makes him deserving of this recognition. Evan has been a four-year member of our Unified Athletics Program, a member and current president of our Best Buddies Chapter, which just hosted for the first time a Friendship Ball a few Fridays ago. In addition, Evan is a member of the Student Council, and has served, has served, I believe, two different times as the student rep to the school committee. Evan is also a student athlete, and at Dartmouth High School, he's been a member of the Indoor Winter Track Team each of his four years here at Dartmouth High School, and most recently this past winter season, served as captain of our indoor track team. In the fall, Evan will be majoring in Political Science at the College of the Holy Cross. I believe I can speak for all members of the Dartmouth High School community when I share that the void created by these two exceptional young people in their graduation, we will miss them for sure, and we're confident that other leaders will step up, but they deserve all of the recognition they receive, and Dartmouth High School is certainly indebted to them. So I'd like to congratulate both Evan and Josh, and we look forward to presenting them the award at the Scholarship and Awards Evening on June 1st.
Thank you, Mr. Tebow, well deserved for those two young men. Any comments from my colleagues? Chris?
Sure, I'll just say congratulations to them both, two outstanding individuals. We got to know, I've gotten to know them both, so no, best of luck in their college endeavors.
Yeah, as my colleague just stated, I mean, I'm not surprised, they're two incredible young men who I've been fortunate to interact with, you know, in my work here, in my service here. So I'm not surprised, and I wish them all, all very, you know, the best in their future. Look forward to hearing what's to come.
And I'll just, just to, you know, piggyback on what my colleagues have said, I mean, I've had a lot of fun just like watching them, you know, grow through like their middle school years into their high school years, and, you know, I can, you know, speak to their leadership, I know just besides just sitting in this room, you know, I've watched them out with my like own younger sons, and so, as well as my daughters as seniors, and it's, you know, they are just really truly nice kids, and those are the kinds of kids that I'm just really proud and humbled to be, you know, seeing on their way in graduating from Dartmouth High School. I think we have a lot to be proud of, and, you know, certainly they're a product of a really strong and heartfelt community that's supported them. So I think that we're really lucky they're both staying in Massachusetts for a Holy Cross and Stonehill. So, you know, they're going to rock this world, so we're really lucky.
I have no doubt about it, both, both fine young gentlemen, and, you know, I agree with what Mr. Tebow said, and, you know, where do they find time to do, to do everything, your type of deal with, you know, the class, the class load that they're taking and such? So my heartfelt congratulations to both of them, I wish them nothing but the best as graduation comes up in the next couple of weeks and they move on, you know, kind of, as I always say, you know, come back and see us and make us all proud. Okay, next, it's great nighttime, this is what this is. When somebody says, "Why do I sit here?", and this is, it's things like this that really make it special. Our next recognition is our Special Education Parent Advisory Council, and I'm looking for Ms. Townsend and Ms. August.
Thank you so much, Chair. Good evening, everyone. The Dartmouth Special Education Advisory Council, known as the CPAC, is a parent organization that focuses on bringing support and information to parents and families of students with disabilities. While many of their speakers and topics focus on supporting students with disabilities, Dartmouth CPAC meetings have and always will be open to the public and all families. Parents of students with and without disabilities have provided positive feedback after attending one of the CPAC meetings. This year, in addition to the annual Basic Rights Workshop, the CPAC-sponsored sessions focused on anxiety in children and adolescents, secret lives of teens and tweens, and healing post-pandemic. I would like to take a moment to sincerely thank Kathleen Amorall and Deb August for their roles as CPAC Executive Board members. They've done a tremendous job bringing in relevant, high-quality presentations to all parents and families, and especially this year focusing the presentations on the mental health needs of students and families. I will be turning the microphone over to Mrs. Amorall and Mrs. August, who will share the names of students and staff that were individually recognized in our own annual CPAC survey sent out to parents. But before I do so, I would like to formally recognize all of the Special Education staff in Dartmouth for their dedication and commitment to our students and families. To all of the general educators, special educators, related service providers, and teacher assistants who support students with disabilities, I sincerely thank you for the incredible work that you do this year and every year. And now, I would like to turn the microphone over to Mrs. Amorall and Mrs. August for their recognition.
Thank you. Getting nervous standing on this side over here. I used to do it often, as you guys remember before, sitting on that side, but...
It's different on that side.
It is different, I just got a little, ooh, my knees got a little wiggly. So yeah, we, Deb and I have been at this for many years.
Eleven years.
And the best, eleven years, oh my gosh.
Maybe it's about eleven years.
It's been a long time.
Maybe it's been a long time.
But it's like, it's like it was yesterday.
Yeah.
And we love this part, so every year, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, or at least every three years when they do a tiered monitoring process, they ask us if we've engaged, and they ask how our relationship with the district has been, and they sort of require us to kind of get a pulse on what parents, their experience is. And so each year, we survey parents and guardians around, you know, their previous year's experience, and we share that information with the school committee. Oftentimes, you know, there are themes that arise, and Deb will present those findings later on in this meeting. But what we also do, because we recognize, you know, the, the pretty intense and coordination and effort it takes to support, you know, our students, my son, your son, and our community, we like to add in some recognition to the survey. So we don't want it to be all, "This is what you're doing wrong", we don't want it to be, you know, we certainly don't edit any of the comments, you've got them all unedited. But we like to recognize both staff, as well as students, oh, I think you just peeked at this paper, in the district yearly, okay, good. And so I'm going to first start off by naming the staff who were nominated from each level, and I ask if it's okay, Chairman, if we, if, when you hear your name, I know not everyone was able to make it, if you come on over to the middle here, so that at the end we can get a photograph of everyone, if it's okay with you. So I'm going to start off with the high school, and so just to backtrack again, because I'm nervous, is that we ask parents and guardians to nominate a staff person who has gone above and beyond to make their student feel supported and safe and valued, and has given, you know, the commentary has ranged from just extra support, checking in, you know, to make sure that the child, and checking in at home, and being, you know, having great communication, those sorts of things, and similarly with the peers, we ask for those student, you know, a student who has also gone above and beyond to make your student feel welcome and included, and, you know, just, just the kindness and the leadership shown. So it takes a lot to be nominated, and not everyone, you know, we have 14% participation in this survey, but everyone answers the question that they want to nominate someone, and many of the folks that were nominated were nominated multiple times, so when you talk about themes, that kind of bubble up. But then, of course, there are other folks that aren't nominated, that does not mean that they are less deserving, because we have a great community here. So without further ado, I'm going to start with a little surprise and get it out of the way, because my dear friend and colleague Deb August was nominated, not by me, but Deb has done a lot, those of you who know Deb...
Wait, I didn't sign this one.
No, you didn't. That's okay. So Deb was nominated, those of you who know Deb know the work that she does for all students. So I'm going to backtrack a couple of years, and when my daughter didn't even have her in class and needed some extra help in math, Deb welcomed her into her class before after school. I don't think Emma took you up on that often.
Oh, yeah.
But the door is always open. And in terms of our students with disabilities, Deb has coordinated bowling clubs and filtered that in from the high school to the middle school, and has volunteered her time with the Best Buddies, and is just an, just an incredible person. I'm not going to cry, so I just want to hand this to you first, you don't have to go stand there, because I need your help.
I just want to say that this mostly goes for the kids, not me. It's all about the kids, and it's not about me, absolutely.
Yep.
Yep, they make it amazing.
Yes.
It's nothing about them.
So I'm going to name, you're very welcome, well deserved. So I'm going to name folks, and I know some people aren't here, but I do want to name them. So from the high school, we have Brian Crowley was awarded for having made an impression on students, and Melissa Fitzgerald has also been nominated and awarded for also being super helpful and, you know, to her students. So please take your award and go towards the middle. Oh, stay right there, stay right there, don't listen to me, listen to the man, the boys.
You want to stay over there?
Okay.
Stay right there.
Okay, okay. And so we have Deb, Brian, and Melissa from Dartmouth High School, thank you, and if you'd just stay there. And now I'm going to move to the middle school. And again, these are staff who have gone above and beyond for their students, so much so that parents and guardians have filled out this and added some incredible commentary around what these, these staff do for, for the students. Elizabeth Dufault, please come on up. We're going to keep it in the family now, I'm going to call Mr. Bill Garcia up here for the incredible work you do. Francis Gothier, Anthony Martin, Susan Pelech, and Kim Rio, please come on up for the incredible work that you do at Dartmouth High School. So stay there, please. He's not, yeah, he was unable to make it. And so now we're going to move to Quinn, and, sorry.
Don't worry, wait till I'm in your, wait till we swap. I'm not that coordinated.
Our first nomination from Quinn Elementary is Lisa Aruda. Mary, thank you. Mary Bolton is not able to join us today, but she was awarded. L. Canessa was awarded, I don't believe L. was able. Ashley Couture Reposo was awarded. Excellent. Caitlin DeFaria was also awarded. And again, the commentary that has come in for all of these teachers really range from patience, and guidance, and support, and just all good stuff. Rebecca Kelly was awarded from Quinn. Desiree Meta was awarded. Melissa Sullivan was awarded. Lindsay Vavides was awarded. And Mrs. Vieira, Laura Vieira. This is the best. Now we're going to squish together more as we add DeMello staff. I believe everyone's here from DeMello, but Andrea Minho was awarded from DeMello. Melissa Noons was also awarded. Mrs. Olean, Jasmine Olean. Olean, right there. And Danielle Santos. So that's DeMello. Now we're really going to have to squish together as we get to Potter, although a few folks were unable to make it. We do have more.
That's great.
You've got to stop being such a great district, stop being such great staff. So Teresa Baird from Potter, I don't believe she was available, which is understandable. Paul Schwinnard is nominated and awarded. Darren Florent, Carrie Gregoire, Caitlin Callback. Caitlin Callback. Paula Lassie. Melissa Lawrence. Oh, sorry, yay! Nurses in the house. So Melissa Lawrence, I said, I don't believe she's here. Paula Mata was at last minute unable to make it, I believe, yes. Lori Murphy. Jenna Reese. And Tricia Weaver. And I did that out of order because also, Rick Porter was also nominated for this award. He is here. And I am so glad that you didn't say, "Oh, no, this is for all the", because this is for you, and I'll share, I'll share with each of you what, what folks said about you. So that's Potter, for real, that's the end of Potter. And we're going to move to Cushman. Margaret Collins was awarded. Christine Fostori was awarded. Lisa Perry was also awarded, make a great team. And Julia, Milia, Julie, there you are, there you are. Was also awarded from Cushman, and so, thank you all. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
So I'm going to turn it over to you, Mrs. August.
Okay, did I lose my list? You probably did. But I think that... That's it, yeah. This is it, yeah, okay. So this is the kids, I'm doing the kids, right? And they're all, no, right here. No, you had it organized. All right, so we're going to start with recognizing some students. We're going to start with the high school, and we've got Evan Garcia. And Jacob Kearney. From Dartmouth Middle School, we have Olivia Arujel. From Potter School, we have Julian Amorall. Lucas Aguirre.
Congratulations.
Now from Quinn Elementary School, we have Jeffrey Sylvia. Also have Landon Veloso. We also have Eva Simos. We also have Eva Simos. Elsie Smart. Jayla Conward Johnson. And Tagan Carter. Nice. From DeMello Elementary School, we have Keegan Lopes. Liliana Paveo. Avery Imbo. Reese Remzowex. And Eli Friedman. And from Cushman, we have Sadie Thomas.
Nice. Could you snap up a photo of our, I didn't bring, thank you. Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you.
Just being amazing.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you.
Now that that part is done, we always love to have an audience, but we also understand students have homework, so we'll hang tight for a minute if you guys want to.
Congratulations.
Everybody needs to leave, we're good with that.
Thank you, Mr. Galshaw. Awesome. Oh my gosh, he was so cute.
Okay. At this point in time in the agenda, we have set aside 10 minutes for public comment as to anything that is on the agenda tonight. So if anybody is there and has any questions or concerns about the agenda items, may step up to the microphone. Don't all rush at once. Okay, that takes care of that. Next on our agenda is our wonderful junior student representative, Nyanya.
Thank you, Mr. Nunes. Hi, everyone. To start off, Advanced Placement Testing has now concluded. Dartmouth High School students completed AP exams in nearly 20 different courses. We would like to thank all of our teachers, as well as our AP Coordinator, Mrs. Xavier, for helping prepare for success on the AP exams throughout the year. Our Grade 10 students completed the Mathematics MCAS last week. Our students demonstrated their commitment and perseverance, and our 10th graders have now all completed their testing requirements. Our Grade 9 students are busy preparing for their Biology MCAS exam, which will be administered on June 6th and June 7th. On Thursday, May 19th, the newest members of the National Honor Society were inducted into the DHS Chapter of NHS. We would like to thank Mrs. Enixson, Mrs. Vieira, and the NHS officers for their leadership and hard work in putting together the ceremony. On Friday, Dartmouth hosted the Special Olympics Day Games with nearly 100 Dartmouth High School students volunteering to make this powerful day of inclusivity possible. We would like to especially highlight the efforts of Mr. Bro, Mr. Capello, Mrs. Koker Pierpoint, and all of the support staff that make the Special Olympics possible. Additionally, it would not be possible without the support from our community partners like the Dartmouth Police and the Massachusetts State Police. Finally, we want to wish our seniors well as their last day of classes is this Friday. End of year events are set to kick off next week, and each one of you will be greatly missed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments? No?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
It's amazing, it's the last day for seniors already.
Oh my god.
I won't cry. It's so quick.
Here you go.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright.
Keep them right here.
Okay. Alright, back to continuing on with the good stuff that we have tonight, I'd like to call up Dr. Justine Dale, Principal of the Andrew B. Cushman School, and their spotlight on Cushman students. Oh, and sorry, I apologize, I didn't see them, Ms. O'Neil.
Well, thank you, everybody, for the opportunity being here tonight. So we have myself and our literacy coach, Lori O'Neil, and we have a number of slides, we're going to fly through them. There were some videos that were embedded that I don't think are working because of some technology glitches, but we'll do our best to get through it. Okay. So I thought it was important that I share a little bit about how special ed students come into the Cushman School as three-year-olds. So we work closely with the early intervention partners, and we get a notification saying, oh, these students will be turning three, and next thing you know, we get a referral, and that means that I will be attending a transition planning conference with those partners, and I'll have an opportunity to meet the family and meet the child, and then after that meeting, I will put together an evaluation of the various assessments that need to be done for that child. We'll have those assessments completed, the child's brought to school, now they're only at that point, maybe, you know, two years, nine months old. And then, once the assessments are completed, we'll have another eligibility meeting to determine whether or not they would qualify for special education slot. So I want that cycle just to be known as, that's how our special education preschool slots are filled at Cushman. So we have the integrated preschool, and in the integrated preschool, we have eight peer students and seven students with special needs, up to 15 in the classroom. And the peer students come through us through the lottery process that was held in March, and this year we had 110 applications for 49 peer slots, so we have a lengthy waitlist at this point. And we have spring screening that will be taking place, actually is taking place starting tomorrow, and we will screen all the preschoolers, not only the ones who were able to get into the program, but those on the waiting list, and any other child in the community that is approaching three years old or three years old. And that, also, we will do screening that will tell us if that child needs further evaluations in any of our areas, OTPT, speech and language. At Cushman School, we are so lucky to have the related service providers at the building, so together, we work together in supporting our students in all of these areas. And when I came to Dartmouth, I was so excited to see that we actually had our support people in-house, and what a, what a opportunity that is to have them right there with us. Because they're in-house, we are able to utilize the resources of the building and also do some cross-content areas. Here is a friend who's playing in the ball pit in our motor room with one of our speech and language TAs. And it's just so much fun to see how much this room is used, you'll see it in some other pictures. Here's another picture in our motor room with some of our friends using a swing, and any child can go into the motor room, doesn't have to be a special needs child, it could be any child, it just needs to have some energy output, when it's, especially when it's winter outside. Here's another picture of a support person in our speech and language department integrating literacy into the services that she's providing. And to kindergarten now, at Cushman, we have four kindergarten classrooms and two TAs, and this year we had two co-taught classrooms, and in those co-taught classrooms, of course, we have students with IEPs, and in kindergarten, they have art, music, PE, library, along with technology. And that brings me to why I have this wonderful lady here, our students are supported through our literacy coach, and she's going to speak to you about the reading and writing, and phonics, this takes place in kindergarten.
So we teach reading, writing, and phonics instruction in, we deliver it in a workshop model. So here are some, just some snapshots of the kids working, both with the teacher individually, and the far one on the right is the mini lesson. So there are three parts to a workshop model, and it's really an instructional practice, it's just the way we deliver the instruction, and it helps students, we'll deliver a mini lesson at first, and the teacher really models a skill or a strategy. Then there's independent practice, where students get to practice that skill individually or in a small group, and this is really where the teacher moves around the classroom, offering conferences and targeted feedback. And finally, we have the share, where the students come back together and as a whole group for reflection or debrief. So this is just, I don't think that we can see the book, but she's in a reading workshop, and really, the goal of a reader's workshop is to teach students strategies for reading and comprehension. The model, the workshop model really allows teachers to differentiate and meet the needs of all their students, so students are not reading the same book, they're not working on the same level, but they're just, they're receiving feedback and just moving up the ladder as they go. So it really helps to foster a love of reading and give students a chance to practice their reading strategies. This was a little clip, I don't, I guess it's not going to work right. So he was just reading, and you can really hear the humming of the classroom in back of him, it's not quiet, he's reading as though he's alone, and you can hear the teacher, you can hear the other kids reading their book, and he happens to be working individually. There are small groups going on, there are partners going on. This guy was reading a piece, reading a piece of his writing. So in, for writer's workshops, students work on informational pieces, narratives, and arguments. He was writing an argument about not running in the hallway, working really hard to reread his writing, and he was very successful, he could read everything he had put down, so he, the students really have come a long way from the beginning of the year to this, this point of the year. We have them write authentic pieces for real audiences, and they really, they really believe that they're changing the world with these, these arguments. Finally, in phonics workshop, oh, this was a clip, yeah, it's too bad, it was good. The teacher is, so the unit that they're, they're working on right now in phonics is really that you can use phonics in, of course, your reading and writing, and that's, that's of course why we, we study phonics, but she was trying to get them to, to add, like, the unit is asking students to add things like.
Magical.
Magical words, and so really, they're, they're just, they're, they're not real words, they were just, they had to come up with a word in order to create a magic spell, I think it was. And then the students were working really hard to, to write those words.
And these two little friends were going to turn the cafeteria into a chocolate factory, and they were writing their magical words, and it's too bad you can't hear the video, but it was so sweet, and they were saying the magical word, and the other friend, was that a T or was that a P sound? And they were like correcting each other, it was so sweet.
Yeah.
Okay, well, did you have anything more you want to say?
No.
Okay. So then, I wanted to, I wasn't going to go over the bridges, because I know you've been hearing a lot about the implementation, and it's been happening at Cushman as well, in preschool and in kindergarten, and the teachers have really embraced it and doing a great job. But I wanted to share some unique things about Cushman School. Here is an outdoor community meeting, we have three expectations, take care of yourself, take care of others, and take care of our school. Very simple, and we use that language, and the children understand that. And we are Feinstein School, and I'm so excited to say again this year, we have the kindness tree, and students are really understanding now what it means to be kind, to be kind at home, at school, and in their community. They write kind deeds, they bring it to school, they, or draw a picture of what they've done, their name goes up on a heart or a leaf and goes on to the tree, and we take pictures, we celebrate it, and I just, I just adore this. Here is an example of the Feinstein Junior Scholar Keepsake Journal that we pass out at the beginning of the year, each student gets a journal, and on the cover of your journal, you have your golden ticket, which is a cherished thing that you want to hang on to. Every Tuesday, the golden tickets are selected by the Feinstein Foundation, and they are advertised on the news and on our Facebook page, and this year we had Claire Worley receive a golden ticket, which means that she receives $500 for a nonprofit agency of her choosing, she chose Buttonwood Zoo, and with that, she was able to get a close encounter with a red panda, and the school wins $5,000. And I, with the school together, we did a big drive for Gifts to Give, and I was able to take some kindergartners there with their parents on a little tour to see the foundation. If you haven't seen it, it's, it's worth going to look at, it is amazing. And these children were able to leave with a stuffy of their choosing and a book of their choosing. Also, through the Feinstein Foundation, we receive free shows and things like that, and this is the Iguana Show that we had, and the children were entertained with a variety of reptiles, and we had big boa constrictors, and it was amazing, and the kids loved it. One of the things we do at Cushman is that we really, we want to go beyond awareness of different disabilities to acceptance, and this little girl's shirt says it all. We were celebrating diversity and looking at autism and accepting autism, and also the little girl on the right, you know, she has a sibling that has Down Syndrome, and she had a beautiful handmade family shirt that we just were celebrating, and we do that in a variety of ways. One of the things we did, we had a spirit week, and on the spirit week, every day was a different day, and this day was comfy clothes day, because we wanted to have a sensory-friendly Friday, where we would teach the children about children having sensory sensitivities, and we all were able to wear comfy clothes, we had the classroom lights shut down and just use the natural light, and we also wore sunglasses, if we wanted to wear sunglasses, just to kind of calm our bodies. And here's another day, this was celebrating neurodiversity and the beauty in the diverse spectrum of the human mind, we were all wearing rainbow and tie-dye clothes. Finally, our newest addition at Cushman, we're going to end with that, is our new little playground. Some of the Feinstein monies have gone towards this playground, and you'll see the picture there, all the students were watching it be installed, they just naturally set themselves up like that, and I said, oh my gosh, what a great picture. And then, obviously, the next side is enjoying it on the first day. So we are building our playground slowly at Cushman School. Last year, we had our fence, our field fenced in, this year we got the structure, and now I'm looking to get a big sand house, sandbox with shade for next year. And here we are, this is our, what would you call this, our logo, and this is put together by Hannah Roberto, our art teacher, and this year we were able to get this on sweatshirts and have spiritware at Cushman, so, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Great. Thank you.
No, it's, it's great, and I will say, it's so great to see a playscape there, like, finally, for these, because I know they always are looking over the fence, but, I mean, just everything you do, it's just like, you know, speaks so much about like warmth and kindness, and it's just, I mean, my son went through there, and I can just, you know, it just emanates from that, that building, from the people that you have working there, so.
It's a great team.
It is a great team, so we're really, I'm really grateful, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Amro?
Yeah, no, thank you for sharing, and appreciate you kind of talking about that timeline because it is, it is, you know, cumbersome, and it, and it's a process in terms of students filling peer slots versus students needing or being found eligible for special education. I'm wondering, and I think I asked this last time too, are the early intervention sort of referrals coming in on a, manually, you don't have much to base it on pre-COVID, but is it, has it been smooth? Or are they coming in as expected? Or are there, I'm just worried about, you know, the state of the last two years and students, you know, with even EOHS sort of like changing around keeping kids on eligibility for EI versus transitioning, you know, during the pandemic. Is that kind of coming into a routine that seems?
It is. It's, it's really falling into place now. We did have an influx there for a little bit because they were children that weren't just turning three. They were already older, and it was like a little breakdown right there. So beginning next year, we probably have about half of our spots filled already. So depending on what the pace, well, it's a rolling enrollment, so it's a hard one to, to pinpoint as to how many are going to come in.
Very good. And yeah, just a plug for like the CPAC. It's always a resource for young parents who either want to learn more, get support through, about special education with the Parent Advisory Council, or step into a leadership spot on the CPAC and sort of take the reins as we all get older.
Yeah, they step in at three, they can be there for a long time.
I think that's when they got us, right? But yeah, and so I'll probably connect after. Maybe we could even do something where we kind of have a night to talk with young families about what the CPAC is and how we can help support and alleviate some of the questions they have for you in terms of just, you know, the role that we fill in that way. So, thank you.
Mr. Oliver?
Thank you, Mrs. Amro. Thank you for your presentation. It's great to see the students enjoying themselves, all the special events that takes place there. It's also nice to see some, some type of anomaly back in their, back in their lives and back in the education environment. I guess my question is, I actually have a couple of questions. One, so when you, when you talk about the referral process, well, the referral process, early intervention and all this, this is also the one, includes the one classroom over at Potter as well, or is that like separate? How did, I'm just curious as, is it just, do we consider it all one big preschool program in Dartmouth or?
Yeah, it is. And the Potter program generally fills up first. So we, we go from there and fill up our slots. But yes, it's one of, so it's seven preschool classrooms as a district's program.
Okay. Great. And my second question is, how are you finding, because I know obviously with the budget, we're responsible for the budget, and every year, we hear about, you know, needs that arise across the district, and we keep hearing about related services. How are you finding, are the students coming in more needy because of the pandemic and because of COVID? And I, you know, I believe in universal, but I would love to see universal pre-K. I think it's a, you know, there's a lot to be said about that, and I think that a lot of the research speaks for itself. But I'm just curious as to, are we seeing the needs increase?
Yeah, I, I have a spreadsheet that just kind of shows everybody who's come in and where we've tested and what the diagnoses were or whatnot, if they qualified or not. And Beth Townsend and I have had numerous conversations with regards to why we see so many children with autism coming through. If the doctors have been maybe, you know, over diagnosing it because these children have not had the opportunity to socialize, they've been at home, and they are, you know, stilted because of that. So I don't know, but I will tell you that the kids that are coming in are way more needy than what, than what I saw last year and what I've seen in my, my career. The need for speech and language overall is the number one, hands down, area that really needs to be a priority for addressing the needs of these little three-year-olds.
Thank you very much. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Good questions. Thank you.
Okay. This is August. Your turn. You get to talk about the CPAC survey results.
Jonathan's going to come up here and help me switch it over. Hey, Jonathan. You're useful, that's right. Thank you. All right, so this is based on the survey that was sent out to the community. I think we had about 83 people respond. I'm just going to start with a little background for the CPAC, and then I'm just going to report out the data that came through. All right, so special education, parent advisory council, so we abbreviate that as the CPAC. Okay, this is our Dartmouth one. Every public, every public school district in Massachusetts is required to establish a CPAC. Massachusetts state law assigns both an advisory and a participatory function to CPACs. Membership is offered to all parents of children with disabilities and other interested parties. So this is kind of a little plug too, you know, to get more members and to get more people, letting them know that we are here to help. All right, we are a parent-run group. Our mission is to help inform parents of special needs kids. We try to help educate parents on their rights and inform them of the many resources available. We sponsor many workshop, workshops, events throughout the school year. The most significant is our annual Resource Fair. We are thrilled to bring it back, this huge event. It is scheduled for September 25th. Mark your calendars. This Resource Fair helps us raise money, which we donate to support a variety of school-sponsored events, sports, activities. We also sponsor professional speakers to lead workshops for our parents and community. Examples of such events that we support is the Unified Bowling Club, the Dartmouth Best Buddies Chapter. And we also just recently had a webinar on depression post-pandemic. So that's been a couple of things that we've put our money towards. All right, so starting on some of the results of our survey. So services, children received, again, we had 83 responses. And it, and that's pretty much throughout the, the whole thing will be the 83 responses. So two children for EI services, which is about 2.4% of our survey. IEP services are 67 children out of the 83 responses, 80.7%. 504 plan accommodations, 13 children, 15.7%. And IEP or a 504 that's in process, we have five children in that area, that's 6%. So children's placements, early intervention would be the, the blue. I don't really have a number there. So pre-calc, either, pre-calc. I was just doing, the math is in the brain. That's right. So pre-K, either Cushman or Potter, looks like 9.6%. Pre-K private school, we've got the, like a light orange in there. I don't see it. So pre-K out of district would be the green, 18.1%. I think my colors are a little bit off on this. I think the Quinn is the 18.1%. DeMello's 13.3%. That was grades K through five. Potter School grade K through five is 14.5%. I would say the pre-K, either Cushman or Potter, is the 8.4. Purple is, is less than the one-third, assuming, like the colors aren't really matching. All right. Oh, it's a breakdown there. All right, details about children's placement, we have 12 responses. SMEC, the TLP, that's the Transitional Living. Regular education placement related pullout. Speech therapy at Potter. These are just comments as to children's placement. Greater New Bedford Vocational Technical High School. Pre-K at Cushman. The PALS Program. SMEC in Rochester. IEP for speech services. Grade four, I don't know what the asterisk meant. That was how they put it. Cushman Kindergarten suffers anxiety and has ADHD, receives help with reading. So those were just a couple, 12 responses that we had. Special ed eligibility and referral process was smooth and efficient. They were asked to please rate. And at the bottom, I did put how the rating went. If it was closer to one, if they disagreed, and closer to six, if they were in agreement. So two were in disagreement, 2.4%. Four, we had a 4.8. Then we had six responses at 7.2%. 11, 13.3%. 21 were starting to be more agreeable, 25.3%. And then 39, 47%. Evaluation reports were explained clearly and were easy to, to understand. Again, closer to the disagreement, we have two response, responses, 2.4%. A little bit more towards the agreeable, two at 2.4%. Right in middle, right in the middle, three at 3.6%. Four, a rating of four is seven, 8.4%. Rating of five, 20 people responded at 24.1%. And in total agreement, 49, 59%. Components of the IEP 504 were explained in detail. We didn't have anybody in disagreement. Rating of two, five people, 6%. Rating of three, two people, 2.4%. Rating of four, getting kind of closer to the agreement, eight, 9.6%. Rating of five, 21 people, 25.3%. And then a rating of six, 47, 56.6%. If you guys want me to slow down, I will. We're good? All right. Parents' concerns were addressed during your child's team meeting. So we have two people with a rating of one, 2.4%. One person with a rating of two, 1.2%. Rating of three was five, 6%. Rating of four, 6%, sorry, six people, 7.2%. Rating of five, 18, which was about 21.7%. And then in total agreement, 51 people, 61.4%. And parent concerns prior to and after a meeting are addressed in a timely fashion. We have four in the disagreement with a rating of one. One person had a rating of two, 1.2%. Rating of three, five people, 6%. Rating of four, 10 people, 12%. Rating of five, getting closer to agreement, 16, 19.3%. And then a rating of six, 47 people, 56.6%. And then COVID compensatory services were considered. So we have 33.7% were saying yes. 22.9% had a rating of no. And then not applicable, 43.4%. Okay? And if COVID compensatory, that's a hard word. Services were needed, were service, services provided, and/or a plan put in place that is being followed. 83 responses again, not applicable, 62.7%. Yes, this happened, 19.3%. And no, 18.1%. So almost like split on the yes and no there. And we're getting closer here to the end. Do you believe your child's placement and service delivery is appropriate? So we had three people each with a rating of one, two, and three. Then we had 13 people with a rating of four, 15.7%. This again goes with the disagreement to agreement. And then 18 with a rating of five, 21.7%. And 43 people with a rating of six, 51.8%. And does your child experience bullying as a result of their disability? 74.7% said no. 9.6% is not applicable, and 15.7 was a yes. If you answered yes to the previous question, has the bullying been discussed with school, with school, addressed, and remedied? 79.5% was non-applicable. 10.8% was a no, and 6% was a yes. And strengths, I am happy with the services. Dedicated and educated staff. Staff has good communication. They genuinely love my son. Was this part of it?
I would, I mean.
I'm going to hold off on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's in the other part.
Not that we don't want to hear the strengths, but.
Right. I think that was part of the other one.
So I wouldn't want to.
I just want to, I think, there it is.
That's it.
Thank you. I'm like, wait a minute, we discussed not to talk about that. And I'm like, it appeared. All right. Any, any questions?
Question, Mr. Oliver?
Sure, I'll start. First of all, I want to thank both of you for your great presentation that you did earlier to recognize our staff and students. And I, I've had the, I haven't been recently, obviously because of COVID, but years ago, I had the opportunity to go to some of the CPAC meetings. And I, I think that's where I actually got to know Mrs. Amro, and I thank you as well. And I, I just can't say enough about the CPAC and the Dartmouth CPAC and how it's run and the time and the effort that I know all this takes and the dedication. So for, for that, I thank you both for your, for your dedication to this because it, it means a lot. And obviously, you know, you're always looking, you're trying to recruit people to, to take over. I, I see where this is going. So I'm hoping that, you know, more people will, more parents will, will step up and, you know, help out. With that, you know, I think this fills, definitely fills a need in any district to hear, even though it's a very small percentage, to hear parents' voices. And Dartmouth's no different, and I appreciate all the data that you, you shared with us. I think it's very helpful, you know? And yeah, it certainly lets us know where we stand as a district and where we're with, with this. So I thank you both.
Exactly. Thank you.
No, I just thanked, she, she does. She does a great job. And we, I'll just, you know.
As do you.
Well, but we, we go on the road with this show. We're a lot of fun. But I, I won't mention any names right now, just, but we, we also, so CPAC is open to parents and other interested parties. So not only do we have parents from other districts, pre-COVID more so, but even during our virtual events, attending our meetings. Like we see, like Ms. Townsend said.
Liaisons from all the schools.
We have liaisons from schools, and we have one in particular who is out caring for, you know, her beautiful daughter, who, they're right in the mud with us in helping us coordinate events and organize, you know, things. They keep me in line because I can be a little bit of a chatterbox and all over the place, and we each have our skill set. But, you know, there are a lot, there are other folks that, that are in the mix with us, including staff, and you hold that dual role. So it's really valuable. That's, I don't have anything else to say.
Well, yes, well, I'll say, like, speaking of dual roles, again, thank you, both of you. You know, again, I have to echo what my colleague had said is, you know, excellent presentation. You know, it's always really informative. You know, it looks like just from like statistically, you know, again, I know it's a relatively small sample, but it seems that for the most part, we're doing pretty well, and that people certainly seem to be feeling like that they're being advocated for, and their students for the most part are receiving the services that they want. They felt like, again, there are exceptions, of course, but it sounds like, I know I went through the 504 process like recently, you know, it, it feels like, you know, those, just, you know, looking at the evidence, most people feel that they're being, they're understanding the process. And that, that itself is really important because it, you know, speaks to accessibility and language. So I feel really good seeing that. I mean, anytime we see bullying connected to, you know, disabilities, it's always, you know, whatever that percentage is, like one is too many. So that's always a concern. I did take note that in that case, we have a, you know, parents, it looked like they hadn't followed up. You know, again, I'm just trying to like, you know, parcel through. So, you know, but, but that aside, you know, certainly, and just the testimony of everybody we saw come to, you know, before, you know, this morning, or this morning, excuse me, tired. Come earlier, you know, in the presentation, that people feel so supported by their staff. I mean, the numbers of people that we had, you know, it says, especially, you know, looking back over the last two years, we know that, you know, these children in particular have had, you know, very hard time, you know, with COVID. So the fact that they're feeling supported and connected to staff, to the point that parents are writing that is, is really a testimony to what's happening in our schools. So thank you very much. So, um, thank you very much. I mean, one of my questions I did have, though, is how many people do you tend to have attending your meetings? And have you found a change, you find more parents now that you're, when you work on a virtual platform? I must imagine that depending on what you're offering, there's a shift, but do you have a lot of people regularly attending? Like, how does that?
I think it fluctuates. I think before COVID, um, it, it would fluctuate. I'd say sometimes it'd be 10, sometimes it'd be 20. When we had the Zoom meeting that, and one of the first ones, it was in October or something, we had like 30-something there.
Right.
So, and then on this last one, I think we had 20-something.
Okay.
I'm trying to.
Yeah.
I think, would you agree?
Yeah.
Those were the numbers, yeah, I don't have the numbers, but, I mean.
Yeah.
I think we actually got more post-COVID than pre.
Right, well, and again, like everything you've done around anxiety and, like, I just have to think, you know, thank you. That's such a, you know, there's such a need, you know, there across, like you said, and not just for students who, you know, maybe like qualify as a student who, um, has a disability, but, you know, across the district, we just see that, you know, over and over again. So, you know, certainly appreciative, and I would imagine for childcare, which is something we all struggle with, having the Zoom platform, it's, you know, as an option.
We always offered.
Yeah, no, so it's great.
They would go into the gym and get some energy out and stuff like that.
No, it's great, so thank you, thank you for everything.
Thank you. And I just want to say, with everything you guys were saying, communication is, is the key between, you know, all the parties that are involved in the team, definitely.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, did he want to?
I'm good, I'm good. No, I'm fine, I'm good.
She was like, I'm done.
I missed the news.
I spoke for John. Just kidding.
That's fine, I'm good. All right, uh, next on our agenda is the approval of the regular and joint session minutes of our meeting on May 9th. So moved. Moved by Mr. Oliver, second by Ms. Waite on the motion, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. And, uh, entertain, uh, the executive session minutes of, uh, May 9th also.
Oh, I knew that language.
So moved with the stipulation that they be held until the matter for which they were, uh, purpose, uh, yeah.
That's what I was going for.
Second.
There you go. That is always the problem when I come sit over.
That's what I was struggling with, I was like, ah.
Don't worry about it, we get it through it, all right. So we have a motion and a second, motion by Mr. Oliver, second by Ms. Waite.
No, Ms. Ammaral.
Ms. Ammaral, I'm sorry. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you. All right. Okay, uh, next, real easy, a couple of consent items. Okay. Uh, we have a request from the Dartmouth High School Marching Band and Color Guard to operate the food concession at the Dartmouth Living Memorial Stadium for the 2022 football season.
So can I make a motion?
Yep.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve that request?
Yep.
A second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Waite, second by Ms. Ammaral on the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the chair will abstain since I'm a member of the association.
I am too, but.
Well, no, but my wife's the treasurer, so.
All right.
I'll bugger out that way.
Okay, that's good, I think that's fair.
You're fine.
Okay.
Uh, all right. Next, something we always look forward to, finally, again, we can have, is a request by the Dartmouth High School Unified Arts Department to hold their 2022 Summer Arts Camp.
Yes.
And we received a fantastic breakdown from, uh, Ms. Mrs. Cronin with, uh, what's going on and, you know, the postings that they look for, and what the courses are, and registration and everything else, so. Any questions on that?
It's great.
Okay.
No, I, actually, I would just like to see, um, how enrollment is, um, just want to see if we got our kids, our students back.
Hope so.
So, yeah, after, after the registration deadline closes.
Yeah, and that's fine. So, have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Oliver.
Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Waite. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, um, new business, SMEC quarterly report, I think we're gonna hold that to.
Yeah, I asked, um, Ms. Genther if we could just hold it to the next meeting, just because we have our, we have our SMEC meeting coming up on the 31st, I believe. And, uh, there's a number of things that we may be discussing, including the first read of the budget.
Budget, yeah.
So, yeah, looking forward to sharing some, hopefully some exciting news if we can, um, close on a real estate deal.
Yeah.
That one will be tough, but it should be nice. All right. Dr. Gifford, superintendent's update?
Okay, I have a, a number of things that the schools have been up to, so I'll just read through a few of them. The middle school has been working a lot with the, uh, grade eight civics projects. And some of the examples are homeless kits that they've, um, put together for personal hygiene items and socks, and, and they would donate it to a homeless shelter and, as well as food pantry donations. Another group is working with the PALS students and, uh, to beautify the grounds. They're working on the, cleaning up the courtyard, so it's a nice way for, um, them to participate, as well as some vocational skills that they're working on. Uh, the National Junior Honor Society, all of these has their cleanup the beach day. And, um, fourth, over $4,000 has been donated to the, uh, Red Cross. And this was after lessons for the social studies classes and that, which were aligned to the current standards. Sixth grade did a lesson on refugees, seventh grade literacy and human rights. And, um, historically in countries around the world, and eighth grade focused on humanitarianism and what it means to be a good citizen. And, uh, they've done some book clubs, in, being introduced in the sixth and seventh grade, after, um, they saw how successful it was in the eighth grade, and, uh, working on more literature. And of course, the seventh grade trip to Patriots Place, and the eighth grade has their end-of-year field trip coming up. And of course, um, the, uh, I was going to say graduate promotion, uh, coming up soon, as we all know, for grade eight. Quinn and all of the other elementary schools have been participating in art shows, as we know, some, um, did them at their own school, and some participated with the district one. Quinn also had a block party, community event on Saturday, and they had all kinds of things happening, bouncy houses and vendors and face painting. So it was a nice, a nice, uh, event, once again, to start to get the community involved, um, with, um, the events that are happening at our schools. Potter, uh, obviously as well, they've had their pre-K through five art show, which was in May, May 12. And, um, it's, again, it's one of the first times since 2020 that we've been able to have folks in the schools and really participate. So we were real happy about that, especially the grade one students, which families never really were in there at all. And, um, the Potter staff, about 90% participated in that. And they also had well over 100 participants in, um, a bingo game, bingo night that they had. I also want to mention that, uh, the mental health series with the Cook Center is, kicks off with our first session, if you will, on June 7th. The brochure, uh, poster has been put out, uh, it's about social media, protecting our children by staying aware and involved. So that's on June 7th, and people should see that poster on our Facebook page, as well as send home in the backpacks and register for that, uh, virtual event. Also over at DeMello, they had their Boost-a-thon fun run, and, um, they, as well as other schools, have, uh, been doing the Junior Achievement Day in their schools. And something special over at DeMello, the DHS Robotics Team, um, was working with the grade five on an engineering project, so that was kind of cool. And, um, they've also been participating, and people are getting their field trips kind of done, if you will. Lloyd Center, the YMCA, and the Whaling Museum. And last but not least, I did let you know that, um, we did, uh, we are promoting, um, Ms. Liz Correa. I always say Correa, but I think she really wants it, Correa, how does she pronounce it, Katie? Yeah, and I've always known that name is Correa, so, anyway. She will be taking over for Katie Poveo at the DeMello School as principal. So we'd all like to welcome, uh, welcome her into that position and, and wish her the best. And she's very excited, you know, she started, Dartmouth left and came back, so it's been a full.
Full circle.
Full circle for her, and she said, you know, DeMello's her home, and she's really excited. So we'll be posting for the assistant principal position this week. And finally, uh, Mr. Mr. Kylie would like to provide some updates as well.
Thank you, Dr. Gifford. I, I was pleased to see that the Finance Committee, um, supported both the, the budget and, um, the capital improvement plan for the town. I think the, the, it was unanimous, the vote on the capital improvement plan, it was a split vote on the budget overall from a town perspective. But, um, you know, they, they did vote to support that, so that's a good sign, hopefully, for June 7th. I did just want to update you on the Dartmouth Memorial Stadium renovation project. So we had a, a very disappointing bid opening, um, on the 12th. And we had three bidders, uh, for the remainder of that project. The low bid came in at $6,390,000. We were, I was optimistically hoping somewhere in between three and four million. So, um, but being realistic, given the, uh, economic climate that we're in and the inflationary environment, it's, that's, I think that's what this reflects. So at this point in time, we're going to put it on hold, we don't have the money anyway, and, um, you know, reevaluate and see if there are other options, um, besides the obvious option, which is wait till things sort of normalize a little bit in terms of supply and demand and inflation and economics. It, it appears that, you know, people don't exactly need to be low bidders on a job like this. They may already have a lot of work. I know that it's very hard for, um, people to find good employees all around and everywhere in the, in the economy right now, so I'm sure it is in construction as well. So I think that, um, you know, at this point, we need to, we need to regroup a little and, and, uh, take a look at it, see if it's worthwhile trying to split it up. I don't really think it is. I, I think it's best to take a pause on it, but that's, that's where we are with it.
Mr. Kylie?
Yes, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you for that, um, I don't want to say dismal update, but. Frustrating update, as the, you know, the project continues to, um, move at a snail's pace because of COVID, obviously, not through anyone's fault. But just to confirm, we did, um, award the bid for the storage facility.
We did, we did do that. That actually seems like, I think the timing of that was such that, I, I think the economy didn't quite understand where it was going to be now. And I know that the contractor regrets, regrets bidding on that project, the way they, you know.
Sure, because of the cost of.
I mean, he's come out and said, this is horrible for me, but, but they're honoring it, and they're gonna.
That's what I was gonna ask.
They're honoring it, so.
And what's the timeframe on that?
Uh, we actually set up a fence today, gonna be breaking some ground tomorrow, so.
And just to confirm, because it's been years now since we originally started with this project, just to confirm, I can, just for everyone watching at home, for the committee, where's the, where's this building going in relation to the field?
Storage building is, is going to the, uh, let's see, to the northeast of the, um, of the stadium area, to the northeast of the visitor stands. So, um.
So if you're looking at the stadium from Slocom Road, the back left corner?
Yes, correct, correct. And, um, so that'll be going there. That was necessary so that we could then reinvent the existing stands to provide concessions and bathrooms and things that really are in dire need of.
Right.
You know, so, so we'll have that, we'll begin to.
That's a positive, I, I guess what I'm saying is, that is a positive thing.
It is progress.
It is progress.
It's not what we were looking for, but it is some progress. So, um, yeah, I'm confident that that will be completed. Certainly, that is also taking longer than we expected. But it's, it's a step in the right direction, and, and again, hopefully, better days are ahead at some point, we can, we can revisit.
I guess at this point, I, I would like to ask if we could reconvene the, the turf field committee. And I know that hasn't been, um, appointed, we haven't been, uh, reappointed, um, all the members of that, including, and if, for, I'm not sure if, I know you were on, I'm not sure if Mary was on.
No.
With, it's made up of select board members, um, Sean, um, McGinnis, um, I don't know, who's that Director of Development now? Do we have a Director of Development?
That would be Cody.
Yeah, Cody Hadad, um, has, has taken that role.
It's made up of a number of individuals, so I think based on the results that you received from, from your bids, that I think at this point, I think it's, it's worthwhile to, to reconvene so we can have some more formal discussions as to what, because obviously, we need, we definitely need the support of the town, um, on, on this project, one way or the other. And I think it's safe to say that the money that we have allocated, that Town Meeting has allocated, um, one way or the other, whether we wait a year or two years, we're gonna need more money, is, is the reality.
That's correct, yes.
Mrs. Waite?
Yeah, so just, just one thing that seems to be, like, I, I know, having been there, you know, for multiple band competitions and, of course, everything else. And I know that now that we're having to delay this, we do have the issue, and I know it's gonna come up when we start talking about our, you know, the DEI community, about accessibility. So we have a lot of, um, people are coming in, elders in wheelchairs and things like that, and I know, I just struggle, just even as a parent, saying like, where do you go? Because we, you know, we're doing our, we're selling our, like, raffle items or something. So just if I think if we can kind of come up with, or someone can strategize, just a clear place that, I, I just don't know where those places are as a parent to direct, and I don't know if other people feel like that, where I can direct people with wheelchairs to say, like, because it's, it becomes a little bit of a challenge. So, you know, in this conversation, if that's, because I know that was part of the thought around, like, this, um, you know, construction piece, is that we're gonna make it more accessible, but even just to try to, like, say, you know, look, with, you know, middle school graduation or whatnot, like, this is, this is a plan, and this is a, a space that we can, you know, set aside, like, you know, free of encumbrances, that would be helpful, I think, for us, so, just a thought.
We do have that far aluminum bleachers that are handicap accessible with a wheelchair ramp and everything else that are there. I mean, no disrespect, if 500 people show up in wheelchairs, we'd have a problem.
No, 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 no.
But there is that handicap area set aside.
It's, I think it's.
Type of deal that they put up a number of years ago.
Yeah, right, I remember that.
You're far though.
Yeah, well, it's.
Kathleen?
To, to your point, John, um, yeah, it is far, and it's behind the, it's behind the speaker, but it is something. But, um, to your, to your point, John, uh, I don't know if there's an answer to this, but that was partially funded. At the time, I was a member of the Disability Commission in town, um, which, you know, I stepped away from because it really was, when Mr. McGinnis came in, they sort of reformulated how they were. But they recently have, um, appointed somebody to chair that again. And I, I know historically that there, I know this is small money, but, uh, there, there's some part of the ticketing, you know, parking in a handicap without a placard or that sort of thing. There, you know, that fee, if they collect that, was supposed to be sort of earmarked for the Disability Commission. And I, I don't know if it's something that we could, you know, previously, we've, we've partially funded that, that piece. We've also done things for voting with visual, vision. I don't know if there's money in, in that capacity to sort of help with, with, with.
With the overall project?
Overall project.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we could use every dollar we could get to help.
I don't know where it stands now, it's been a few years since I've been part of it.
Right, it was, yeah, back 10-plus years, I guess at least 10 years ago, I would say, when we put in those stands.
Yeah.
And that is, that's at, they're actually the stands that are closest to the main entrance, so it's.
Yes.
It's on the southwest corner there of the stadium. Accessibility is, it, it's one of the primary reasons we were trying to do this project. So hopefully, we can address that on a longer-term basis someday soon.
No, agreed, so I just asked the committee, if the committee's support to, if we could just reach out, back out to the town.
Get back out to everyone and get them.
See if we can reconvene.
Back on, back on board.
I can reach out to Mr. McGinnis, and we can try and coordinate that.
Sure, that'd be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your state, I'm, I'm, I know, I think you have some more, I cut you off, I'm sorry, Mr. Kylie.
No, 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 that, that's, that, that's okay, that's, uh, I think that's enough. But, yeah, we're, uh. So we're, we're hopeful for Town Meeting at least, not so hopeful for the, this project, but.
Get one, one thing at a time. Get through Town Meeting, and we'll be good there, all right. Anything else?
Nope.
Dr. Gifford? Mr. Kylie, you all set?
I am.
Okay, um, anybody have anything before I, you know, Mr. Oliver?
Thank you, Mr. Nunes. Uh, just really quickly, I don't think I had the opportunity, I don't know if it was, um, if I brought it up, I don't, I don't believe I brought it up the last meeting. I had the opportunity to attend a, um, a field trip, uh, with Mr. Parati, um, and his students to University of Rhode Island. And, um, he extended the invitation to, uh, Mrs. Waite and myself a couple of months ago when, um, we were checking out the new, new studio back there. And I gotta say, what a great, uh, group of students he has, uh, we were well represented, um, and it, just to see the. We were well represented, and just to see the, some of their faces light up when we walked through the campus and looked, looked at the communications building. So once again, every time I come here, I'm amazed at little additions that are added to, to our meetings, the little live TV we have there now, so, no, just props, just a big shout out to Mr. Parati and his students.
You know, when they redid that a couple of months ago, it was nice when we got the tour before the meeting and that, and, you know, it's kind of sometimes, you know, when you watch a sporting event, and they'll show you the, the, the trailer that has all that, you know, and.
Yeah.
All the guys, you know, they've got, you know, 50 people in there with all the different doing things, and, you know, one person in check, and see what these students have got. It's, it's unbelievable what they're going through and what they're learning.
Just to put it, just to put it into perspective, the, the television studio at URI, they actually broadcast for ESPN Plus, I believe, a lot of their games. I mean, it's, they, they hire students to do that, and they actually have very, some of the same equipment that we have here, so, and they were talking about what a very high-caliber program that we offer here. So I think it's worth, I think it's worth mentioning that they, you know, they were very, the, some of the professors there, the department heads, were very impressed.
One of our students that graduated from here last year was in the program and such, I think it was at Emerson this year, but he was on a, sat the afternoon lacrosse, you know, on the field with the camera type of deal.
Okay.
And they had pictures, you know, as his mother was saying, you know, they had pictures of him, you know, taking, you know, film on the field and everything else, so.
That's great.
It's where, it's unbelievable.
Even for that.
What they have.
Even for that extension, I know that that same student still talks to Mr. Parati and says, we have this here, like, at Emerson, you need to get this, like, back, you know, so it's neat to see that he's established, like, such a warm relationship with kids that it's, you know.
Yeah.
It certainly doesn't end, you know, there.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm just gonna add that the, the DSMA is having its arts and music, well, it's a craft fair and music festival coming up on June 11th, so they're planning that, just, you know, they're trying to, they're bringing in some vendors, I know they're organizing musicians, hopefully trying to get in some, some students, not just from Dartmouth, but also possibly some groups from other schools as well, so I'm kind of excited to see that, it'll be around the stadium, so.
Stadium and demo.
It's in the, it's in the process still of being planned, but I think it's gonna be a really, really fun, you know, great, great day, and, you know, snuck in between, you know, different, you know, graduation and other events, so.
Excellent.
Yeah, that's it. Kathleen, anything, you all set?
No.
Okay. I mean, the only thing I have in also, and I know our student rep was kind enough to talk about it, you know, our seniors are leaving this week, and, you know, it's graduation time, not only for our students, but all the students in, in the area, and, you know, prom nights and after proms and things of that nature, and, you know, please be safe, you know, use, with all due respect, use some common sense, you know, and, you know, we want to see you back, you know, number one, we want to see you at graduation, and number two, we want to see you back here next year and the year after, letting us know how you're making out and how you're doing, so, you know, please be safe and, and be thoughtful. And just, I know, getting to the end of the sports season, and our teams are, you know, winding into the tournament, so just wish them good luck, type of deal. And with that, our next meeting is June 6th, and after that, our next meeting is June 27th. And just kind of keep in mind, you know, usually in the summertime, we start at 4:30, 5 o'clock, so just, we'll talk more about that.
Next time.
At our next meeting, type of deal, but if, you know, versus starting at 6:30, if, you know, the situation arises that we can start a little bit earlier, would be, you know, would be good, so. And with that being said, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session for an update on negotiation with union personnel's and a discussion on school security and not return to open session. Moved by Ms. Waite.
Second.
Second by Ms. Amorall. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing on, roll call vote, please, Ms. Gunther.
John Nunes?
Yes.
Mary Waite?
Yes.
Kathleen Amorall?
Yes.
Chris Oliver?
Yes.
Thank you very much, everyone. Happy Memorial Day, be safe.